Go ahead and call the January 6th meeting of the State County Board, County Commander's Board. If you will, back again on the public record.
Lord, we come to you tonight to give thanks for the wonderful holiday seasons we've had. We ask that you lead and guide and direct us as we make decisions for our county, that we make best decisions for our citizens and decisions that glorify you. Lord, we ask that you be with our men and women and law enforcement, our firefighters and first responders as they're out there in this weather, Lord, and protect them. Lord, also, we ask that you be with our military folks around the world that are fighting for us and fighting for our freedom. In your name I pray, amen. If you will, stand with me for the pledge.
Pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone should have their agenda. I think we've got, staff has requested, one amendment to the sick leave on Personnel Resolution, item three. Do I have any other amendments?
I'd like a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
I've got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Swain. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one, planning and zoning, ZA seventeen dash eleven, rezoning request for Caleb Morrison. Presenter, Michael Sandy. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. How are y'all doing today? This item we have for tonight is rezoning request from Caleb Morris for the property located behind his home with one hundred twenty feet of frontage on NC twenty-four, twenty-seven. Let's see, near Newt Road containing four point two-nine acres and a fifty-foot easement along the east property line along tax record two-eight-nine-oh-eight, twenty-four, twenty-seven. Is to be rezoned, request is to be rezoned to general business. Property is currently zoned RA, residential, agricultural. Lots are surrounded by property that are also zoned RA, as you can see on the map, with one lot, with one unused lot across the street, twenty-four, twenty-seven being zoned for neighborhood business. Adjacent properties are either used for residential or agricultural purposes. The Agro-Civic Center is located on the corner diagonally on this property along the corner of Newt Road. Mr. Morrison is proposing to use the site for a vehicle repair shop. He plans to construct a building for this purpose on the lot. The vehicle repair shop is allowed in the general business district. The proposed building would sit approximately three hundred fifty feet from NC twenty-four, twenty-seven right away. He plans to have storage of vehicles undercover in a parking area. Because the surrounding properties are used for non-business purposes, the property in the storage areas must be screened in order to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The GB districts are generally located on fringe of highways leading in and out of the urban center. The parcel is currently an open field with some trees and vegetation along the western edge, along the frontage of twenty-four, twenty-seven. The shop, when constructed, will require a septic system. Orders available from the county utility department. Traffic along twenty-four, twenty-seven averages nineteen thousand cars per day, according to NC DOT. The property is located within a growth area per the two thousand and ten Stanley County Land Use Plan. Planning staff recommends approval of this request due to its location on the highway and in a growth area. The planning board reviewed this request and unanimously recommended rezoning requests at their December eleventh meeting due to its location on the highway and in the growth area. The board emphasizes the need for a buffer as required by the ordinance. Be glad to answer any questions.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Sandy before I open up?
Chairman, I have one question. What kind of buffers required at that area?
It can either be a planted buffer or a fence between-
Everybody in the front on the roadside or up, dabbled out by the trees or?
They're typical on the side and rear, and then of any incompatible uses like the storage area, had to be screened.
Right. Thanks.
Any other question before I hold a public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one for Michael. Michael, on the easement, why are they having to do an easement on that left-hand side when they have property that faces the road front on the other side?
They don't have to do an easement. It's the existing easement.
Okay.
And it serves the property owner to the rear, the farm that's located to the rear of the property here. Just say that's another form of access they have.
Thanks, sir.
Michael, I've got one question. That concerning that fifty-foot easement, that fifty-foot easement is indeed a platted recorded easement?
If my understanding is recorded easement, I haven't looked at it, but it's not part of the rezoning.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this rezoning request? I think I've got a list here. Mr. Morrison, come on up. If you will, tell us your name and-
My name is Matthew Morrison, and I'm Caleb's father, and it would be a shop that would be mine and his. And I want to, I want to correct my, I want to make my intentions correct. There is an easement on the far, if you're looking at that or not. The easement that he's talking about, I was not intending on using that easement for access to the business. His property goes all the way up to the easement. There's an area between the easement and the house, a pretty wide area. I was planning on whenever the hill and the field were graded off, I was going to have the driveway built up to the road, not use the easement. That was my intention.
So if it's, if it's, my understanding, the house in the front that joins twenty-seven, you or your son, you own that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That helps me understand that. Are there any other questions, Board members?
Yeah, I do have a question. If you would, put the map back up. And I'm looking at it as if I'm looking at twenty-four, twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Your intentions are to come in, I guess your house now is the left part of that property, blue line.
The house would be the center block, the center block against the highway. That's the house. And it, the property connects on the left-hand side, too.
Yes.
But, and I could connect it there if I had to. There's a lot of standing timber there. I think it would be much easier if I connected on the other side of the house, but I could-
On the right side?
Yes, sir.
But according to the blue line, I guess there's a parcel that's owned, pretty big parcel. Are you coming across that parcel?
Where the blue connects, his, his house is the center block, and then the larger block to the right of it, that's, that's his. And his house is on the center block, and it's split into two pieces of land. He owns all of it, but it's split into two tracks. And the track in the blue, it actually connects to the highway on one side. There's a lot of standing timber on it. If I needed to, I can connect there, but I would rather connect on the opposite side of the house. There's, there's nothing there.
And that's where the existing easement is, correct?
All, to the far right is the existing easement. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, this parcel-
Mr. Sandy, go ahead. If you will, help us.
Yeah, this parcel right here is also included. Our GS just doesn't allow us to select multiple parcels when we print this kind of map, but if you look in your, in your paperwork, this parcel here is also includes where Mr. Morrison's house is located. The easement's along this property line all the way to the back, but this parcel is, would be rezoned also, and I'm sorry it didn't show up in blue on this map, but that's, that's included in the request. He's wanting to put, he'll, he's talking about putting the driveway along this line back into the back parcel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Board members, do you have any other questions?
I do have some questions. It's not regarding the property line or the easement, but are you, this is going to be a body shop, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are y'all currently in the body shop business?
Yes, sir.
Are you renting or?
No, I actually work for a body shop in Concord. I've only been there about a year and a half, but I've been doing paint body for twenty-five years. Ten of those was at Alums.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Burleson, I've got you down. You come forward and state your name for the record and your-
Hi, Brian Allen Burleson. I was just coming, he done answered my question. We own the easement, and I was just wanting to see if he was going to use our driveway because we farmed the land behind it and had to get in with heavy equipment. I just didn't want nothing to disturb, like I said, he not planning on using that. He said he's going to put his own road, so I have no, no further questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison or Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Sandy, excuse me. Is this, are we rezoning two lots or one? I, that was, I got confused a minute ago.
Yes, sir. There's two record numbers listed on the paperwork. I can go back, get my paperwork and read them, but there are two, there's two parcels.
For a to, for a total of four point two acres?
Yeah, whatever. I don't have, I need my paperwork again.
Any other questions?
Yes, four point two-nine acres. It's tax record eight-three-three and eight-three-two.
Mr. Chairman, another question, please.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
What size construction, what size buildings are you planning to put on there?
Forty by one hundred.
Big pardon?
Forty by one hundred.
Okay. Four thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this rezoning request? God, I'm going to declare the public hearing to be closed, and what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request, and as part of this motion, this project is on the highway within a projected growth area and promotes the economic growth of Stanley County.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Eifert and a second from Commissioner Swain. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to wish the Morrison family good luck on this venture. We have a young man who's going to be following in his father's footsteps, and the best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, if you folks, if y'all want to hang out, you can, but you're, you're good to go if you need to go. Item two, Board's Annual Strategic Planning Retreat. Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the past several years, the Board's held an annual planning retreat to sort of kick off the fiscal year budget process. We've looked at some potential dates, February ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third. So what we're asking the Board to consider is, one, do you want to hold the planning retreat, and two, do you want to have a facilitator, and three, we need a date for that. So those are the, those are the items for, for discussion and decision this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any comments, questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Morgan?
I can do any of those dates except for the sixteenth.
Any other comments? Everybody okay with those dates?
I would personally like a facilitator, but I would leave it open to see which day we can get on. If, if nine, if the twenty-third works here, about it.
Have County Manager use that, those two dates at his discretion to, with a facilitator, is what I'm hearing.
If I have a preference, it'd be the ninth, but I think the twenty-third would work just as well for me, so, yeah, I agree.
I'm good with either one of those dates as well, so if you need that in form of motion.
I have a question.
Commissioner Lauter.
I'm in favor of facilitator. Can we have a range? It may be of the cost for this. We've done it many times, but things do go up.
Last year, I believe, the total cost was fifteen hundred dollars. That included travel, their time, the preparation, the preparing the, not only the agenda, but also the minutes afterwards, or the compilation of what it's, so I think before that, it's gone up. I mean, I think, you know, going back several years, it's closer to a thousand, and, you know, over the course of nine years, it's, it's about fifteen hundred. You know, certainly, if the Board wants to put a range on that, that's fine.
I just think that's more than reasonable. I think that's more than reasonable, and I, I don't think I'd do it for less than double that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lauter.
I'm also in, in favor of a facilitator. I think we expect too much of the manager to do that for us when he has quite a lot of responsibilities already, and if we would be able to do it on the night, I would like it because that would give it to us, give it the return document back to us, the returned product.
Okay. Sounds like we've got several Board members that would prefer to do it on the ninth, but I guess County Manager has to. We've got the twenty-third as a backup date. And I think location, I'm assuming the airport is fine with everyone. Is there any issues with that? Do you want that in the form of a motion? Do you have someone to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we have a planning retreat at the airport facility and that we have a facilitator.
And the date?
Right, and preferably the ninth, depending on a facilitator, the twenty-third.
I've got a motion to have the retreat at the airport with a facilitator. The preferred date is February the ninth, and a backup date is February twenty-third. Do you have a second? Second from Commissioner Lauter. All those in favor of that, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item three, Personnel Resolutions Update. Presenter, Mr. Manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. The next item I have is the updates to the substance abuse policy within the Personnel Resolution, and you all have had this in advance. Be happy to answer any questions on that. Really, this is being driven by changes to the federal guidelines, which is where we get our funding from, through DOT, and so if we don't comply with those, then we're at risk of losing the ninety percent of the, the funding that we receive for the cost of vehicles and eighty, eighty-five percent of funding that covers administration. So we want to be, we would want to be cautious if we weren't, weren't to, to follow those guidelines. We also have made some changes, or recommending some changes, to our sick leave and annual leave policies, and really, this is to ensure that folks that are on leave without pay, true leave without pay, not, if they're, if they're out on sick leave, taking sick leave, or annual leave, and are actually using accrued annual leave, then they would continue to accrue. It's folks that are actually out on leave without pay, and not because of workers' comp, but truly leave without pay, where they haven't worked here six months, or have worked here six months, but have used all their sick time and vacation time, and while they're out, they're still accruing vacation and sick leave, which then they can use to, to pay for them being out. And so we want to make sure that folks that are on leave without pay aren't accruing vacation and sick leave. And so that's those, that's the reason for those changes that you have before you this evening, and the amendment that we, you have in front of you from what was originally in the agenda was just to make sure that the sick leave language mirrored the annual leave language in terms of that amendment. And so be happy to answer any questions if the Board has any.
Any questions for County Manager? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the Personnel Resolution Updates as presented.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? County Manager?
I just want to make, also, there was one other piece of that which we didn't put in here, but there, where the Board took action to create the Consolidated Human Services Agency, we want to, we want to reconcile that in here as well, so giving us the manager and the attorney a discretion, and as well as our HR Director, the discretion to make those changes so that the Personnel Resolution recognizes the fact that those employees are no longer under the State Personnel Act or the State Human Resources Act within the, within that, so, and-
Was it that statement-
That was part of-
-made in that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure you all were clear on that, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We're good, then. We're good on that.
Yeah, it's, it's recommended.
What we read.
It hasn't, it's not, no, and what you read was just the substance abuse and the annual leave and sick leave. I didn't print out, because it would, I would have to print out almost four hundred pages of the Personnel Resolution to show the different places where it may need changes, and so I'm just saying where those changes need to be made in the Personnel Resolution. You're authorizing the attorney, HR Director, and County Manager to make those changes so that those employees are no longer referenced as State Personnel Act or State Human Resources Act.
That's the way I covered it when I was reading over it.
Does the maker of the motion care to do that in two separate motions?
That would be fine. Make a motion that we accept the Personnel Updates as approved. That's it. The first motion.
Okay. Got a motion from, and a second from Commissioner Morgan. Any other discussion on the first motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero.
I would like to make a motion that, help me, Andy, that the County Man, that we authorize the County Manager, Attorney, and our Human Resources Emily to make sure that this, these Personnel Updates coincide with the newly formed Department of Health and Human Services Board. Is that good enough?
That works. That works. I think everyone heard Vice Chairman McIntyre's motion, and a second from Commissioner Lauter. Any other discussion? Seeing none. If everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item four, the Consent Agenda. Board members, you've had a chance to go over that, review that, I'm sure. What is the pleasure of the Board? Got, got a motion to approve from Commissioner Lauter on the consent agenda, second from Commissioner Swain. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Public comment. Anyone here to speak to the Board? Seeing none, I didn't have any on the list. Board comments. Commissioner Lauter?
Thank you.
Commissioner Eifert?
I had the opportunity to go to the Cardinal Innovation Nominee Committee. It's a twin catch basin county, and here's the applicants that we had to go through. Saying that, we've got two folks on that board from Stanley County, out of a twenty-one member board. Found out recently that this is all out since her connection with the DHA. She's not going to be on that board as a voting member. Turn this on. So she will probably be an ex officio member, but I thought it was really good that we at least got two folks on the Cardinal Board from Stanley County out of that twenty-county catch basin. Thank you for letting me go to that. I enjoyed that day. It was a long day, but we got some stuff done, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain.
No comment.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I'd like to make a report on something I should have done at the last meeting. We, the first Thursday in December, we had our first full board meeting of the newly developed DHHS Board after we had a real organizational, some updates and information, and elected officers, and heard some reports from Health Department and the Social Services, and that was about it. But it's very interesting, and looking for ways we can cut down on the number of meetings we're going to have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Lauter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jane, I'm glad that you brought that up because I was wondering how the consolidation was going, and I guess the only question I have is about it, have we had any other unusual turnover employees because of the consolidation at this point?
I don't know of any, County Manager, I don't think so.
No, not, I mean, you know, obviously, we had the turnover initially with the Social Services Director, and then we had our human, our Health Director resign, but our Health Director left to go to another consolidated agency, so I don't attribute that to the consolidation. And that may, may have been the case, but it certainly wasn't the impression I got from my exit interview with Mr. Joyner. So, and I haven't heard anything from anyone else. I think generally, employees realize that the Board's intentions were that of just trying to find a better way to deliver services and be more efficient, and I think they're realizing, the majority of employees, overwhelming the majority of employees, are realizing that this Board has, you know, those employees' best interests at heart, and that we're, we're not trying to cut services or cut corners in terms of delivery of services, but that we're trying to find a way to enhance delivery of services through that multidisciplinary approach and more communication, and I think we'll get there. We're, we're planning to present to that Board on Thursday evening candidates for a new Human, Health and Human Services Director, and so we're, we're moving towards getting a new person in place, and I think that will help, help that Board with developing some strategy and, and really doing some innovative things to help bring that, those two departments together in terms of service delivery. So I, I think it's gone, I mean, I think it's going as well as can be, given that we've had some transition in leadership.
And I think, Andy, right quick, for, he did give that at the last meeting, that they did have five applicants, narrowed it down to three, and we had three of the new Board members that served on your review committee. Four, okay. So it's, so far, so good.
Also, I'm reporting that our senior service department is alive and well, and I can attest to that. There were over two hundred mature adults at a New Year's Eve party, and a couple immature adults were there also, but it was a- But it was a great time had by all, and I'm proud to be a mature adult senior citizen and act immature sometimes, but it was a fun New Year's Eve party. And I can say that this, all the people that were there paid to get in. And that was a, an event that she had a live band. Food was brought in by everybody that attended, and she even made a little money on it, so I was very happy with, with the attendance, and I really enjoyed the New Year's celebration that the Singer Center put on. Thank you.
Becky does do a great job. Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan. Commissioner Morgan?
Just want to say, thanks to the staff out of Oatboro, I went, had a chance to go out there, I'm sure if y'all, I went out there for the invitation, go tour to school right before Christmas, and that's the first time I'd been out there, and I can't even remember the last time I'd been in there. And I was amazed that if you haven't had a chance to get out there and go tour, because I think that's a, a great asset to our county. It's a little bit different than what you're looking at a normal elementary school is, so if you haven't got a chance, get a chance to take, go out there, something to be proud of.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. And I don't believe I have a comment, so wish everyone a very Happy New Year, and hopefully it is safe and very prosperous for everyone. We have, we do have a closed session to discuss a personnel issue in accordance with GS 143-318.11A6 and EDC item, General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Make a motion to recess this meeting and go into closed session for what you just said.
Got a motion and a second from Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, say aye.